Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council Huddle, we'll get you straightened out on that pretty quick.
Foo me twice, shame on me.
All right. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Just some things under other, if we could. I'd like to discuss the statement of no confidence that was previously signed.
Okay.
I would also like to discuss an emergency declaration.
Okay.
And that is it.
So noted, any others? Commissioner Gold?
I have no amendments, thanks.
Okay. Motion approved?
I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further comment? We didn't do our roll call, JJ, again. That's all right, go ahead.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes?
Vice Chair Boyce?
Here.
And the vote?
I or N, I'm a vote.
Oh, were we voting on the agenda? I'm sorry. Affirmative, Mr. Chair, thank you.
And Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, just for the record, Commissioner Gold is not here, she is on the phone. I'm Chris, Commissioner Pash, Commissioner Boyce, Director Schmelzer, Council Huddle, and JJ are here. All right, moving on, do we have any public comments? None, I see. Wow, that's a first, okay, good. Consent agenda. Do we have any amendments to the consent agenda? All right, so A is appoint Darryl Wary? Is it Wary?
Do we need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, were you?
Are you going to make that motion?
Second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further comment? Roll.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Here. Oh, aye.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, number, or letter A would be to appoint Darryl Wary to Mountain Drive Special Road District.
We just did it.
Okay, so we've already...
Item number five, I think, Mr. Chair, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. I am messed up today, aren't I?
No.
Action item, all right, number five, appoint members to the Budget Committee, Ms. Schmelzer.
As you know, we don't have a Budget Committee right now, it was dissolved, so we do have some new applications, they are in the packet, and we would need the Board to decide who would be appointed to the Budget Committee.
Position number one, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we appoint Ken DuKay, that is North County.
I'll second that, since he's the only person that applied in North County.
Any further discussion? Roll.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried, Ken DuKay is appointed.
Mr. Chair, position number two, Richard Thode and Mr. Bill Ostrawski, tough call here, but I'm going to ask the Board, make a motion to appoint Mr. Thode, spelled T-H-O-D-E, Mr. Chair.
Do we have a second? I'll second. Any further comments?
Yes, I'd like to make some comments. I think Mr. Ostrawski is, has the experience and has better financial background. I appreciate both of them applying, but in my opinion, I think Mr. Ostrawski is a better candidate.
My comment would be, I certainly appreciate Mr. Ostrawski. I have admired him for some time on this Board, and, or on the Committee, and I just would like to see a fresh start for Curry County, nothing personal against him, but I have read through Mr. Thode's resume as well, and would just like to see a fresh start for Curry County, since we have the opportunity right now. Any further comments?
I thought Mr. Thode's resume and background experience was quite good, and I think would be very beneficial to the county as well.
Roll.
Chair Gold?
No.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Gold, no, Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Yes.
Mr. Thode, Thode, I have a hard time saying it too, Commissioner, has been appointed.
Mr. Chair, position three, another tough, three applicants, Teresa Lawson, Mike, is it Horgan, H-O-R-G-A-N, is that correct?
I think so.
Okay. And Brad Alcorn, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask the Board, and I'm nominating for Board approval, Brad Alcorn.
Do we have a second? I'll second, Mr. Alcorn. Any further comments?
I have a comment, I was looking at the three applications, and again, I see Teresa Lawson, and extensive financial and accounting background, I think we need that on our Committee. So, that's my comments there.
I personally believe all are qualified for this position. Again, I see, I see Mr. Alcorn as a fresh face in Curry for a new Committee. I don't know him personally, but I have read all of the resumes, and I'd like to see another fresh face involved in our county government. Mr. Boyce?
Ms. Lawson does have an excellent background as well, and I'm hopeful that, like Mr. Ostrawski, that they're going to be able to contribute in equally important ways, and I'm just going to remain hopeful that they will, these are tough calls, as you well know. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further comment? Roll.
Commissioner Gold?
No.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried, two to one, Mr. Alcorn is appointed to South County.
I just want to make a further comment on these appointments. We all know it's going to be a very difficult and challenging budget season. I'm just hoping that the new faces, the new energy, we can approach this budget season with open minds and moving Curry County forward.
We've got some serious work.
Yes, we do. All right, Commissioner updates. I don't really have much more to report, I think Ms. Schmelzer is going to get into some of what I was going to report, but I will say I've spent some time with Sheriff Ward in the last couple days, speaking to him and visiting some of the damage that's been done in Curry County, it is extensive. I think myself, and I know Mr. Boyce, and I'm probably sure Commissioner Gold, have been on the phone, reaching out to everyone we can about the damage that's been done in Curry County, to try and bring resources, additional resources, to this county. I would also like to bring up and commend Steve Byerlin. Mr. Byerlin, your work on this river, Rogue River, the losses, the mitigation losses that we faced from the dam, our second to none, your presentation that I'm bringing with me to Washington, the work you've, the hundreds of hours, I imagine, of work you've put into this, I just, I really commend you for it. I hope that the community realizes the work and the good you're trying to do here, to mitigate those losses and to recover some of the losses that the Rogue River Basin, or the Rogue River has lost because of failures to keep promises and contracts from their, the Corps of Engineers. So again, I just want to lift you up and thank you for your work, and I will proudly carry your work to Washington with me. That's my comments. Commissioner Boyce?
Well, I'm hopeful, if I outlive him by some chance, I'm not going to name, you know, promote a dam named after him, because I don't think we're going to have any more dams, hopefully not, but I just, the amount of work you've put into this, and goes way beyond a good citizen approach and volunteer, and as far as volunteers go, you have some tough competition out there, but nobody's worked harder than you, nobody cares more, nobody understands the importance of this industry and future generations and our fish. It is just, it's inspiring, and so I'll be anxious to hear what your report is coming back. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have one more comment on that as well. I don't know how we can, I would like to look for some kind of compensation for Mr. Byerlin, not only through Curry County, but through Jackson and Josephine County, as they've been named in this as well. Again, Mr. Byerlin, as I personally know, has spent hundreds of hours on this. The research that's been done on this is amazing, he's been to Josephine County, all the information that he's gathered, so I would like to look into, for a future meeting, to look for some kind of compensation for him, and maybe have Josephine, Jackson County join in that. Thank you. Mr. Boyce, you have any Commissioner updates?
I only need 20 minutes. Another stopwatch, though, no, but yeah, thanks for the photos you took yesterday morning, I sent those all over the state, and collecting also a reminder between you and Council Huddle, you know, incorporating the other counties together, just to report to the citizens that in the Declaration of Emergency Classification, or in this case, Classification, Lane County did it quickly, I know two of the Commissioners up there quite well, and they are very helpful. Coos County also did it yesterday, I understand Douglas County likely would do it today, I've been in touch with, per your recommendation, Director Schmelzer, the Delano County Supervisors, and so it is a regional approach, trying to help the citizens understand what we're up against here. I had a good friend say, my goodness, this could be as big as a sinkhole, and it was a good reminder, she happens to be in the room, by the way, so it was an important reminder. I don't think that's going to be the case, because I just did a little research last night, and yet, not to downplay how serious losing 101 is, and I've asked the State Police, the Oregon Department of Transportation, Representative David Brock Smith and I, I said, tough decision, we need to move the trucks off, if we lose that road due to the extra traffic, and I got a very good report back from ODOT, Darren Supervisor, three counties, Darren Neville, and he says, Court, we're going to, we're going to leave the trucks on for now. So, I won't elaborate on that, Mr. Chair, but I just don't want to get a report that all of a sudden Brookings has no north access, either direction. So, we've heard things about the bridge, we're going to put a bridge there someday, and we are collectively here doing everything we can to address this and do our due diligence, and time will tell. That's all I have for today, thank you.
Commissioner Gold?
I would just say, this is just a sample of what could happen in a big event, like an earthquake or whatever, and it's a wake-up call for us to think about what needs to be done ahead of time. Hospitals, the hospital in Gold Beach is really inaccessible to people here. I know myself, going home yesterday on Carpenterville, almost had a head-on with an RV, because they're coming into other lanes, so it's a dangerous situation for folks. That's pretty much all I have to say today.
Okay, so we're going to move into executive session?
Should we perhaps take the two matters that we put on the agenda?
Okay.
That way, if somebody doesn't want to stick around until after executive session?
Fine, that's great, so we'll...
Can we identify those two items, or? No, you can't.
I will.
We're going to right now.
Yeah.
So we're going to forego executive session right now and move to number eight, which is others, and one of them is the Statement of No Confidence Letter, Ms. Schmelzer.
So, earlier, or within the last couple meetings, past meetings, the Board did sign or agree to a Statement of No Confidence. Commissioner Gold, at that time, did not support the statement. Since that time, some more information has been brought forward, and I believe that she does support it, so we'd probably want to discuss that and see if she wants to be added to that supporting documentation, but also, Josephine County has went on record in support as well. They did not want to send a duplicate letter of the same information, so they requested if we could just do a joint letter between Josephine County and Curry County, and while we were sitting here, they actually sent me a revised letter to incorporate both letter heads on that. So this, in the past, you've seen it written, kind of like a resolution, this is actually written more in a letter format, it's got a date, and it would be, if everybody agrees to it, it would be signed by the Chair of both Boards, and it is written, instead of just saying Curry County, it's on behalf of the Curry County Board of Commissioners and the Josephine County Board of Commissioners. So they approved it, and they did, I have the email here, Chair Morgan was authorized to sign the letter if we decide to do a joint letter.
Okay. So Commissioner Gold, have you read the new letter?
Actually, I have, and I agree with it, and I appreciate getting more information and facts from ODFW, so that was the reason that I changed my mind on this issue.
Okay, so we need, do we need to re-vote on this, or just because we have Commissioner's Gold's change, is that enough?
Well, there's also the matter that it's now a joint letter, so I think an appropriate motion would be a motion to approve the joint letter with signature authority to the Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Boyce?
I will make the motion to approve the letter with signature authority to the Chair.
One moment, Commissioner Gold, Commissioner Boyce had a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't need to sign this, but I want my name on the Curry County portion. Like Mr. Byerlin, I know hundreds of people on Rogue River, I think, I'll be careful how this sounds, I know a lot of people in Joe County, a lot of people in Jackson County, I want them to know why I've signed this letter, and why I've supported it, and I think it'll give more attention, the right kind of attention, and will bring more people to the importance, understanding this issue.
So what are you asking to do?
I just want, I just want all three Commissioners' names on, including Joe County.
I can add those to the signature line.
Okay.
Not the signature line, but I mean the footer, basically, which shows the addresses.
That's all I need, and also, that will, you know, we present this to Jackson County, then that will help as well, I believe.
Well, I hope they're going to be, actually, in Washington as well, we're expecting at least one of the Commissioners to be there, and if we can get authorization from their Board before I submit it, they'll, they'll get it signed.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner, go ahead with your motion, please.
I move that we accept the letter with signature authority toward the Chairs, and that would be a county letter, multi-county letter.
Statement of no confidence, okay. Commissioner, do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Roll.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, next we have the emergency declaration, I'm sorry, Mr. Byerlin?
Yes?
Up to the microphone, sir.
Steve Byerlin, I spoke with Jackson County Commissioners today, and they set up a time for presentation to Jackson County on March 12th at 9:00 a.m., and that's going to be on a Tuesday, and they said they couldn't sign the letter till after they were able to give it to their Board in public, you know, and do it from there, but they sound like they would do a follow-up letter if they came on board.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'll be there with you, somehow.
All right, the emergency declaration, Ms. Schmelzer.
Okay, so what I have given you a draft of, and Commissioner Gold, I've emailed it to you, is a draft resolution declaring a local emergency for Curry County and requesting Governor's Declaration of State of Emergency, and this has to do with the storm that went through on February 24th and 25th. So, I can read it if you want, otherwise it is in front of you, and...
Well, I think this will be available on the website, is it, well?
It's also on our screen.
It's on our screen, right here, if anyone would like to look through it. You know, I'm wondering, my problem with this is getting funding even before this date, so I'm wondering if there's a way we could, you know, the date that a lot of the damage was done, or began, was on the 24th and 25th, so, and from what I have led to understand, is it's hard to get funding for anything previous to the date that you actually approve, but I would actually look for a motion to approve this as written. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you. Could we scroll down to the second page, possibly? Oh, here we go.
You have the mouse.
The only question I have, Mr. Chair, and excellent work, Director Schmelzer, I mean, in a short period of time, this is not a mistake, this is just a, let's see, oh, excuse me, I'm not on the second page yet, let's go right here, see that word right there, mandatory evacuation? I understand why that's in there, my concern, Mr. Chair, is after the fires we've had, people hear evacuation, they may not have enough data or information, they may, it could get a little intense, they may think, what in God's name they want us to leave our homes for, so, I don't know if we might want to consider phrasing that a different language, I don't know, I just want to bring that to the Board, I don't have a recommendation, I just, if the public, to the extent, is listening right now, we don't anticipate anything like this whatsoever, we're at the end of the rainy season, thank goodness it's not the beginning, I think we're going to get some more rain, and frankly, I hope we have additional rain until the middle of May, at a much slower pace, but just for what that's worth, if anybody has any comments on that, it is the first paragraph under the Board of Curry County Commissioners hereby for the resolve.
And what I see on that, though, is that this is just basically authorizing the sheriff, if he sees fit, to raise that level to mandatory evacuation, it's not a mandate in this resolution now, it's if the sheriff sees fit to do that, that we are authorizing him to do it, that's the way I read the language.
That is, that is correct, it's essentially in the statutes on emergency declarations, this is an enabling clause, and the sheriff would use his discretion if circumstances change for any reason that caused a threat to life or safety when his judgment required him to order someone to evacuate, it would give him that power.
No, I understand that.
So they could place his trust in the sheriff.
Can you understand what my concern is, if people might not understand, they might, and maybe it's not necessary.
Well, I think if you look at the situation on 101, if that whole area would give way and the hillside would go down, you're probably going to be evacuating some houses out of there, because they have the potential to slide down.
They're probably going to, could get sucked in there, so it would be mandatory that they leave, and they may not, they may not realize that it's for their own good that they're mandatory being made to leave.
And this is, this is language actually borrowed from our, I think, the Brookings Sinkhole Event Declaration as well, where we included this language, so it's language we've used before successfully, without any real incident or pushback.
Terrific, thank you, I'm satisfied, Mr. Chair.
Since you're a republic to ask, does this give the sheriff powers to arrest? I've lived through evacuations back east through hurricanes and such, and...
I've been mandatory asked.
There's been mandatory evacuations, and they've come to the door, and I've said, no, thank you, I'm staying in my home.
Well, and I think that's probably, I don't want to, I don't know if it's a written law or an unwritten law, but I think that, I don't know of somebody that would arrest.
What we're doing is, we're giving the sheriff authority to make those decisions, and I think we're placing our trust and confidence in the sheriff, and I think he's, has a good track record, so, Mr. Barnes, the sheriff has authority to arrest on, it's one of his inherent authorities.
Okay, so he, okay, I was just curious, and to clear it up, so if somebody doesn't leave their home, the sheriff can physically take them out, then, is what you're saying with this ordinance?
I don't, yeah, I don't know if he would arrest them, but I think he could physically remove them from the premises, is what I believe, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, like you, though, have been in those situations, and I've never been arrested or even mandatorily been made to leave, they've just said, okay, we've given you a mandatory evacuation, you didn't heed it, you know, you served the consequences of it.
Aren't you glad I brought this up?
There you go. All right, so let's, any further discussion on this?
I have a comment.
Mr. Byerlin?
I'm not sure if this, if you've thought of this, or it's, I haven't been able to read all of this yet, but my understanding is the slide's still moving.
Yes.
And they're not going to be able to work on it till it stops.
Well, they're assessing it hourly, pretty much.
Right, so I don't know if you need to have that in, you know, your declaration that shows that this is an ongoing situation, it's not over, you know?
That, I believe that's actually in there.
It is in there, yes.
It is the last resolve.
Yes.
This, the last thing I got was 11:30 today, it's moving two feet an hour, still, as of that writing.
That's updated right now, I heard it on the news.
The resolution declaring an emergency shall exist for the duration of the emergency is what it says, Mr. Byerlin. All right, any further comments on this? May I have a motion, please?
I move that we accept the emergency declaration as written.
Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further comments? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, so that's going to do it for our regular meeting, we're going to go into executive session, per 192-660, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by governing body to carry on labor negotiations. This meeting is adjourned.
Ms. Evans, is this your photo, by the way?
We will be back after, excuse me, we'll be back after our executive session, we'll be back on record.
My apologies, Mr. Chair, I thought, I heard the gavel. My apologies, Mr. Chair. I thought I heard the gavel.
We have these parks which are set up to protect and preserve biodiversity. That's challenging under any circumstances. But it certainly is almost impossible if you don't know what the actual biodiversity in your park or the area that you're trying to conserve is.
A bio blitz is a celebration of biodiversity. Biodiversity is the variety of life in an area. We don't know how much life and what types of life are here at Crater Lake National Park. The big, obvious things we know about. But a bio blitz is where we go out and look for a particular type of organism. This year, we're looking for beetles or the order Coleoptera.
The wealth of biodiversity that are in these parks, 99% of it is something that could fit in your hand.
We can't save what we don't know exists. So if there's a beetle species out there that's very important and we don't know about it, we can't do anything to help it. That is the ultimate goal of the bio blitz. It's a way that citizens can come here. We have volunteers that are here who are actually giving this information. They're using their time to help the scientists build a greater picture of what kind of beetles are here in this park.
Getting this sort of baseline data of what biodiversity is there not only shows us what's there, which is just intrinsically interesting for its own purpose, but it also begins to set a baseline. And that baseline dataset is what we then can use. And not just scientists, but the general public and those land managers, the stakeholders in that bio blitz, can use those observations then on into the future to understand if things are changing.
It's not so much about counting number of species. It's more about seeing a fuller picture of the biodiversity. And the biodiversity is the variety of different types of organisms, different types of species.
I do believe that in their past bio blitzes that they have expanded the number of things they now had recorded from the park, but also confirmed that some of the things that were reported historically are still present. So even if it's not a new discovery for the park, it still creates another piece of data that tells us, yes, that thing still lives here and is still thriving or maybe struggling, but we begin to learn something about it. I think that has an intrinsic value to the park for its long-term future, but it also just has an intrinsic social value. When you ask questions about why do we have these parks, and there's lots of ways to answer that question, but one of them is that the parks are these areas where we go to appreciate the wildlife there. And this is a way of tapping into some of that wildlife at all sorts of different levels. One of the key things besides the biology that's involved in these bio blitzes is the interaction with the public and the opportunity to educate the public about the biodiversity around them.
The citizen scientists are here working alongside professional scientists, and that allows them not just to connect with science here at the park, but connect with the greater scientific community. It's a real positive thing. We see all ages coming here, and they're just acting like kids out searching for bugs, but they're doing real science at the same time. It's a great connection between this amazing resource and the people that live around it.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs. And it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire, so we just saw that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded. We're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go. We just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm going to be honest. When the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's going to benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas: outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langloes is less than 500 people. It's very small. So we have to bring in tourists, and being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh, my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my day job, and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're going to send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know what anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan. And we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang-up last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're going to promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the tourism studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way, and it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing, and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have, and don't try to be something that you're not. It's going to be hard. It's going to take a long time, so roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
National parks are one of America's crowning achievements. After all, it was in this country that the idea of setting areas aside for preservation was born. They are a symbol of democracy and exist as places where one can appreciate the beauty and complexity of the natural world, free of human influence. In the past, national parks faced challenges brought on primarily by the industries and practices that threatened them. Today, similar challenges persist, as well as some new ones. High up in the Cascades, Crater Lake National Park remains a pristine natural area enjoyed by visitors from throughout the world. But in recent years, new circumstances have come to endanger the ecosystem of the park. Invasive plant species are beginning to spread and threaten the park's natural biodiversity. An invasive species is an organism that did not originate in an ecosystem and is often introduced by humans. In recent years, Crater Lake National Park biologists have documented a rise in the number of non-native plant species found within the park. Invasive plant species have various ways of spreading throughout Crater Lake National Park. Roads that have been built create pathways for seeds that may stick on tires and get thrown to the side of the road. From the roadways, visitors come from far and wide to see one of the world's natural wonders. With each visitor, the risk of introducing new species also increases. Many invasive plant species have evolved sophisticated methods of distribution through the development of various adaptations to their seeds. These adaptations allow some species to let the wind and even animal life do all the heavy lifting for them. As seeds needle their way through clothing and animal fur, they are carried and then dropped in various places around the park. There are many reasons why new species are entering the park at an increasing rate. One of the factors responsible are the effects brought on by climate change. Due to warming winters, the snow-dominated season of Crater Lake National Park is becoming shorter. Snowpack, that is normally around for most of the year, shortens the period of humid impacts, such as high levels of summer visitation and infrastructure maintenance and enhancements. With climate change increasing the frequency and severity of drought and lengthening the snow-free period, the factors that are disturbing the natural environment are amplifying. Snow melt, that would linger for most of the year, is melting much sooner than usual. Snowpack acts as a barrier to both plant and animal species. Native plant species have adapted to this environment and are used to completing their life cycles during short growing seasons. With the lengthening of growing seasons, native plant species are now vulnerable to increasing competition from invasive plant species. The risk of forest fires increases with rising temperatures as well. As growing seasons lengthen, so do fire seasons. Areas affected by forest fires open up new habitats for invasive plants to move in, creating areas where non-native plants can find solid footing in the competition against their native neighbors. Newly introduced annual grasses fill spaces of forests and meadows and act as a medium for fires, allowing them to spread farther and more easily than before. This means that not only are invasive plant species altering the existing environment, they create a domino effect that can speed up the process of change in the park. In the last three years, 25 non-native plant species have been discovered. With every coming season, these numbers are expected to increase. Amid growing challenges and limited resources, the invasive vegetation management team has been forced to prioritize the most aggressive species in the park. These Crater Lake National Park biologists are controlling non-native thistles from a remote area inside the western boundary of the park. These thistles were discovered late in the season, and park biologists are removing the seed heads so they will not spread farther and establish more infestation sites. Given how large an area these plants can envelop, controlling invasive plants can be a meticulous process, but it is the best way to ensure that these plants aren't able to spread further into the park. Road sides are another area of focus as they create literal highways for invasive plant species to take hold. By controlling invasive plants near the park boundary and along road sides, park biologists hope to reduce the amount of species entering and spreading in order to protect and maintain the natural state of the park.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun to marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is, and what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official state maritime museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach, or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mears, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds in offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But while cautiously, these organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The central coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns, and as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your All-American Road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Fowlweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition earned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront field, with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays. And don't miss the sea otters at mealtime.
Now, all four of our otters were rescued otters. They were found out in the wild.
For the next 50 miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yahats. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay, where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The 40-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yahats is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff, and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hasida Head Lighthouse to the sea lion caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rododendrons along the road sides. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic old-town commercial district along the Sayusla River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed's Port is at the center of the Oregon Dunes, but you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed's Port hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayusla River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston to Bandon tour route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific Coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an old town await you in Bandon. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall. You're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The Wild Coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States, and you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here, you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this All-American Road home. Small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Nea County Mountain, you can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There is little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast Byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shining stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves in the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. So, you've toured nature's finest art museum. You've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria. Ride a horse along the waves near Florence. Pet a baby tiger near Bandon. Hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches or go to the headlands and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature, and you don't have huge numbers of people, but you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different. The ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
We've got a lot of obvious hazards here, but I think one of the greatest hidden hazards is that the weather can change really fast. It can be a total bluebird sunny day. Next thing you know, the clouds will roll in, reduce visibility to almost nothing. You'll get driving snow, blasting winds, and it can create a whiteout, and that's really dangerous to be out in, especially with the edge of the caldera right here.
There are also hazards such as avalanches and cornices throughout the park. A cornice is a formation of snow created by wind. It often forms over steep slopes and can be overhanging. They can easily be broken through if you're not paying attention.
Most of our popular skiing areas and our popular snowshoeing areas are either on or below avalanche terrain. So you want to be aware of the edges. You want to be aware whether you're above or below avalanche terrain. It's incredibly hazardous, and we do get avalanches all the time here.
Unstable snow cornices can kill. Cornices are difficult to detect and can collapse at any time. Stay 100 feet, 30 meters, back from edge of the caldera. Trees can be dangerous in deep winter snow. Tree wells are large cavities around trees that can be three to 10 feet deep. People can become trapped in tree wells and die. Tree bombs are large clumps of snow and ice that fall from tree branches. Tree bombs can injure or kill a person. Use map and stay on the trails. Don't venture off-trail unless you have a plan and are prepared to rescue yourself. Search and rescue response may not take place until the following day. Stay with a group and let a responsible person know your plans. Leave a detailed itinerary with someone you know. If there is an emergency, they might be the only person who can tell the National Park Service where you are.
There's something about having land and sea. Never having to choose between digging in or looking out. Here, you can go where the spirit or the wind moves you. To the tops of the trees, along secluded beaches, or into more wild and scenic rivers than anywhere else in the western United States. We're the closest place to the sunset while still keeping your feet dry and a destination where anyone can begin. We share more than we keep, so you can see more than you imagine. This is a place you have to touch, hold, and feel to believe. The entire shoreline of the west coast's best coast is open to you, and playgrounds made of forests are waiting for you. Escape to Curry County and don't leave anything out.
We've got a lot of obvious hazards here, but I think one of the greatest hidden hazards is that the weather can change really fast. It can be a total bluebird sunny day. Next thing you know, the clouds will roll in, reduce visibility to almost nothing. You'll get driving snow, blasting winds, and it can create a whiteout, and that's really dangerous to be out in, especially with the edge of the caldera right here.
There are also hazards such as avalanches and cornices throughout the park. A cornice is a formation of snow created by wind. It often forms over steep slopes and can be overhanging. They can easily be broken through if you're not paying attention.
Most of our popular skiing areas and our popular snowshoeing areas are either on or below avalanche terrain. So you want to be aware of the edges. You want to be aware whether you're above or below avalanche terrain. It's incredibly hazardous, and we do get avalanches all the time here.
Roadway departure fatalities are a serious and often preventable problem in the United States. The Federal Highway Administration reports that 54% of all highway fatalities are caused by drivers leaving their lane of travel. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking a proactive approach to reduce this kind of tragedy by implementing a centerline and shoulder rumble strip program.
Rumble strips are one of the most low-cost, cost-effective countermeasures that we can apply across the system.
Rumble strips are grooved patterns on the roadway that make a rumbling sound and a physical vibration, immediately warning inattentive drivers that they're leaving their driving lane. Rumble strips allow drivers to self-correct and avoid an accident.
About 67% of fatal crashes in Oregon are road departure crashes, which are a vehicle can leave the lane to the right and hit a ditch or a rock or a tree, something like that, or cross over the centerline to the left and get in a head-on collision or a sideswipe meeting type crash.
Over an eight-year period, ODOT engineers studied segments of 16 different highways and concluded that rumble strips are highly effective at reducing lane departures.
We did a before and after crash analysis to find that we have reduced head-on fatalities by 40% with the installation of centerline rumble strips.
We've been trying to find a way to deal with a problem that seems to be increasing over the last 10 or 15 years with our drivers, and that's distracted driving. And there's a lot of things that cause distracted driving. All these distractions are things that make people take their attention away from where it should be.
Comparisons between other available safety features like guardrail and concrete barriers show that shoulder and centerline rumble strips are the most cost-effective safety treatment available.
We're finding that those are very effective in trying to make sure that when you do make that mistake, it's not the last mistake you make. They help bring your attention back to the driving task and bring you back to where you should be, focusing on being in the middle of your lane and being safe.
ODOT makes a conscious effort to use a bike-friendly rumble strip design where possible and installs 12-foot bike gaps every 48 feet of rumble strip. ODOT understands that rumble strips create a noise that can be disruptive for people who live near rural highways, and we're trying to address these concerns with different approaches.
For the noise, we're looking at some new designs. We're hoping that the new design rumble strip will be just as effective at saving people from making an error and much quieter, on the order of 10 times as quiet. And we're actually going to be installing our first full set of these style of rumble strips along 205 this summer.
So we recognize that noise is a concern, but one of the things I like to tell people is whenever you hear the sound of a rumble strip, it could be the sound of the life being saved of one of your loved ones.
Rumble strips are proven to save lives. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking the lead in implementing the sound of safety.
The goal of the Mountain Hemlock Phenology Project is to take the pulse of Crater Lake National Park. This project will span several years and track the change in spring tree growth over time. We don't just want to know if the timing of spring at We don't just want to know if the timing of spring at Crater Lake is changing, we want to know why it might be changing, so we will also be measuring snow depth around the trees. This is how you'll take your measurements in the field. First, find a branch on the study tree and focus on the end of the branch. We're only going to measure a section the size of our hand. Next, look for the buds on the branches. They are really tiny. The dried up tan buds that look like tiny pine cones are pollen cones from last year. Skip over these. You're going to be counting the tiny unopened buds. Early in the season, these will all be tan color. Later in the spring, the cone buds will turn purple and the leaf buds will become hairy. You'll use your data sheet to identify and count the buds. These are the tree's new growth. Make sure you count carefully, the scientists are depending on you. After counting the buds, help the ranger take a snow depth measurement at your study tree. Park scientists think that climate change may be affecting plant growth at Crater Lake. Mountain hemlocks are a tree species adapted to deep snow, and snowfall has been decreasing at Crater Lake. What do you predict? Will trees surrounded by deeper snow produce more or less new growth than trees surrounded by less snow? On behalf of the National Park Service and the global scientific community, thank you for helping us take the pulse of Crater Lake National Park.
I love walking. It's what I do. So who better to share some tips to help keep your walks safe? Wait for the signal. Take in the sights and smells till you get the go-ahead to cross. Use intersection.
Okay, it is 6:25 on February 27th in the evening. Board of Commissioner meeting is back. We are back in session, and we are going to ask the... Excuse me.
I'm not much help either, am I?
I know we're supposed to proceed as a...
Sure, just be a motion.
Mr. Melzer and the team to proceed as directed from the executive session.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, that's it.
Good job, Mr.
We are in recess.
Are we adjourned?
You're not going to bring me back, are you?